Health and Aging Committee, and this is the 21st day of September. When does fall come?
Thursday.
No, the...
Thursday.
Very good. It's the 23rd. 23rd this year. It happened late this year. Okay, well, we got that down. So, we got two more days left of summer. So, summer fun. So, we have a series of cards, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to, for the record, to read is what's before us.
Item number one is an item that was continued from September 17th, August 17, 2010. It's a Chief Legislative Analyst Report relative to the Department of Cultural Affairs' request for proposals to transition cultural arts facilities to public-private partnerships.
Great. And, Madam City Attorney, could you explain what we have before us? Because this is a very important step in our process. This committee has action, and we want to make sure as we go forward that there's all the bases covered.
Well, what we have before us is what the clerk has simply stated.
I don't know if everybody can hear you.
However, Deputy City Attorney Arlette Maria Brimsy. What we have before this... Can you hear me now? (laughing) Sounds like a cellphone commercial.
Can you state your name?
I'm Deputy City Attorney Arlette Maria Brimsy.
Yeah.
And what's before, what's on the agenda today is the CLA report relative to the Department of Cultural Affairs' request for proposals to transition cultural arts facilities to public-private partnerships. However, there is a procedural issue that we think has come to light in that several of the facilities that were the subject of the motion that is before this committee are properties that are owned or within the jurisdiction of the Department of Recreation and Parks. And under the city charter, Sections 590, et cetera, the Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners has jurisdiction, and they need to weigh in on some of the recommendations that will be presented today to this committee. So, procedurally, this matter's gonna have to go before the Department of Recreation and Parks Board of Commissioners.
All right. We have represented some Recreation and Parks. We'll call on them in a moment. I'd like to ask Cultural Affairs to come to the table, please. And how many facilities are we talking about in total?
Fifteen.
Fifteen facilities? How many of them are in the park jurisdictions?
About half.
Well...
My name is Olga Garay.
Right. Give me an exact number versus an exact committee.
Six.
Six are in the parks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Madam City Attorney, can we bifurcate this in the interest of everybody's trying to get something to... Can we send the six that are underneath the jurisdiction of Recreation and Parks back to it? Think about that, if it makes sense, and move forward with the eight, because time is not, as Mick Jagger said, is on my side.
Actually, Councilman Labaj, I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay. So, we could do that at Recreation and Parks, heard that too. Is Recreation and Parks still here? Okay, good. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. All righty. So, give us the update.
Okay. So, as you know, this committee has been having a series of meetings on this matter, including a public hearing on August 17th. Also, the city council asked the Department of Cultural Affairs to head a working group which consisted of the Office of the City Administrative Officer, the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst, Office of the City Attorney, and several of the council offices which are being impacted by this effort, specifically CDs 3, 4, 8, 10, 13, and 15. And there's been a lot of debate on this matter, but we felt that in the interest of time and to push this whole idea forward, the department needed to come forward with a set of recommendations that tries to mitigate the real need that the city has to capture some of the costs associated with running these facilities while at the same time creating a system that would increase the chances of our partners to succeed. And that's exactly what we've done. And so, in the... At the end of the day, this committee is going to have to make its own recommendations, hopefully based on the departments, to the full city council, which will then have to take a stance and tell us how to move forward with our RFP. I just want to point out that we have a timeline that is included in this document that supports moving forward with the RFP with a September 30th release. It's a very tight window. A pre-proposal conference on the 21st of October. On the 10th of October, the proposals would be due, and then we would review the proposals and award the bids on December the 17th. So, you can see, it's a very tight...
I understand. And in light of the city attorney's recommendation, because of the issues of the six facilities that are on park land, what does that do? You had a chance to think about that.
Well, I just...
And when did you know about that?
About 10 minutes ago. I mean, my colleague from the Parks Department said she had made this statement before, but to be honest with you, the totality of the implications, really, I just became aware of them about 10 minutes ago. I think that just, my gut tells me that if we can move forward with the nine facilities that are not in question, that are not on park land, my biggest concern is that the department runs out of money December 31st if we have to continue managing and operating these facilities. Having said that, a number of these... We had... One of the recommendations that we're making is that the department support these new operators with a $14,000 a year subsidy, and since half the year will be over, we will have saved half of that amount. And so, we might have some wiggle room to maintain those six parks facilities open for a short period of time beyond, you know, into the new calendar year if we cannot come to a resolution with the Parks Department.
Right. Very good. Can I ask Representative Recreation of Parks to come forth?
Good morning, Ms. Labaj. Regina Adams, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks, and with me I have Vicki Israel, Assistant General Manager of Recreation and Parks. At the last committee meeting that you... Discussion you held about this, I came before this committee, and I had made a statement that these sites that are on Recreation and Parks parkland, that it had to come before our board. I was very clear about that, and I stated that we had some concerns about, you know, how things would be handled, what things might be proposed, especially if there were gonna be any additional costs for us to absorb, which included utilities, repairs, and so forth. Also, Vicki has been attending the meetings that has been ongoing about this item, and she also reiterated that same statement. So, we just saw Olga's report. We just saw it last night, and so that's why we're getting here this morning, to make our concerns known. We have a lot of concerns here, and also, too, this is... For any of our sites to be even potentially included in an RFP, our board has to give that approval for that.
Great. Understood that clearly.
Right.
We're joined by Mr. Wesson. Appreciate it, Mr. Wesson, and all your work. What we have a situation here, the city attorneys recommend of these 15 opportunities for an RFP, six of them are on park land or park buildings?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
May I just make a clarification?
Sure.
There's actually seven facilities. Four of them are in one park at Barnesdale Park, but there's ten, three...
Very good. Okay, good. So, how many park facilities?
Seven total.
Seven total. So, seven out of the 15 are under the park jurisdiction. As recommended by the city attorney and by the guides, what we guide ourselves, that those seven will have to be under consideration by Recreation and Parks. Everybody's been working hard to try to keep all life lifted, but at the last minute, this was brought to the attention, which is not unusual in the business that we are in, that we figure these things out. So, what I'm suggesting, Mr. Wesson, that we take the seven that we know are not on parkland and try to move forward with them, because there's a tight deadline, because the budget runs out December 1st, and ask that Ms. Adams and Ms. Israel to get this scheduled as soon as possible. I know your commission's meeting tomorrow. This is too soon, but it's sometime in the future, real soon, that we could have that consideration be made and take the proper steps.
And also, too, that would also require in the recommendations, and I just have a draft, I don't know if there's a final version of this report, but that would also require some modifications in the recommendations, because it authorizes the General Manager of Cultural Affairs to execute agreements and so forth, and that also falls under the purview of our board.
Right.
So, those things need to be modified.
Would it be jointly executed by the General Manager of Recreation and Parks and the General Manager of Cultural Affairs?
Actually, it would probably be our board president who'd have to get...
Does this sign that?
Yes.
Okay. So, if the city attorney look into that as well, let's see how simple we could try to make it, because it's our intent as a committee to try to keep these places alive and to try to work on those issues here. I would also like to ask that we have special focus on Barnesdale, because I know when municipal arts department, and it's always been a hurdle to have, anytime you have integrated ownership of properties or spaces of city departments, and these are things that we have to work out for the people, and this is some, shouldn't be a struggle for the people, it should be a struggle for us to figure it out, because they're very valuable. And the people don't see the lines that divide bureaucracies, they only see the failure or success of a place. Mr. Wesson?
Well, the only thing that I could say is, you indicated we have a situation. Well, I hope we deal with our situation better than Mike the Situation danced on Dancing with the Stars last night.
Who was Mike who?
You... See, it just shows you're aging.
I know. I was watching a football game. Real men watch football games, Mr. Wesson.
That's why you have the remote control. You go back and forth, back and forth.
For the split screen.
Somebody, would somebody please...
Who was Mike who?
Help Mr. Labaj understand who Mike the Situation Serentino is.
Jersey Shore.
Oh, my man. I don't... Yeah. Very good. All right, thank you. But no, but seriously...
Very good, very good, Mr. Wesson.
But seriously, I would hope that Wreckin' Parks would act quickly to get this on the agenda. I agree with you that where it relates to the seven, we should move that forward. I'm pleased personally, I've been kept abreast of what was going on. I think we've made a lot of progress. I really want to thank the working group for, you know, I asked the question where I had some concerns about William Grant Stills and others, and you had a serious conversation about that. It's appreciated. So, I think that we can move forward with the seven, and then hopefully Wreckin' Parks can come back as quickly as possible. And you know them as well as I, they're a great department, and I'm sure they will.
Right. And the other thing I'd ask, that there'd be equity, that you don't discriminate against art as opposed to recreation, meaning if I'm a recreation person who's housed in a private organization in a public way in a rec facility, the same equity that you share with them be shared with art. So, there's no... You're not with the Parks Department, so you have to do this as opposed to same. You understand what I mean?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Israel, again. People of Highland Avenue, thank you very much, Ms. Israel, Ms. Adams. We'll talk to you later. When's your next commission meeting? Two weeks from tomorrow?
Two, yes.
So...
October 6.
October 6. So, possibly you could get that on by then? Is that...
We will try to do that.
Problem? Oh, yeah, you gotta do that. Two weeks, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thanks so much, Ms. Adams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Israel. Okay. So, that being said, we have some opportunity here to do that. Now, I have a series of cards. We're gonna have a one-minute public hearing, and then we'll go over that as well.
Do you want me to review the recommendations?
Yeah, review the recommendations. That'd be very good.
Yeah, okay. So, this is what the Department of Cultural Affairs is recommending, and again, we're putting these ideas forward for you guys to mull over and then go to the council with them. So, we understand that they're not gonna be everybody's favorite ideas, and... But we try to be fair as to the two competing interests. One is to find the most qualified nonprofit arts organizations to steward these facilities while at the same time trying to recoup some of the costs that are inherent in running and operating these facilities. So, first, we're recommending that the city should award qualified nonprofit arts or cultural organizations a five-year program and facility lease agreement with an option to renew the agreement for an additional five years. The term of the agreement would begin January 1st, 2011. The facility should be described as is in the RFP for purposes of maintenance. To help defray costs associated with the operation of the art centers and theaters in question, we have recommended a sliding fee scale as follows. Facilities of up to 5,000 square feet should provide a rental fee to the city of $500 a month or $6,000 a year. Facilities between 5,001 square feet and 10,000 square feet should provide a rental fee to the city of $750 a month or $9,000 a year. And then, facilities 10,001 foot and up should provide a fee of $1,000 a month or $12,000 a year. After the five-year lease ends, we would then retain the right to reconsider that sliding fee scale and evaluate it and possibly restructure it. We're recommending that the rental fees should be provided to the city's general fund, but additionally, DCA recommends that any fees collected would be used to defray costs borne by the two departments that own and operate these venues, the General Services Department and the Department of Recreation and Parks. We're recommending that electricity, natural gas, hot and cold water be furnished by the city to the successful contractors at no cost to them, and that the contractors would maintain in good order condition and repair the premises at the sole cost to the contractor. Maintenance issues would be approved by General Services Department to ensure that the facilities are properly maintained, and all repairs of up to 5,000, and this is a figure that, again, we're trying to verify with GSD to make sure that they're in agreement with this, and we'll do the same with Wreckin' Park, would be the responsibility of the contractors. So, that is, anything up to $5,000 in repairs would have to be maintained by the contractor. However, major repairs would be furnished by the city and negotiated annually with the city. The successful contractors would be required to provide janitorial and custodial services for all interior and exterior areas of the premises, trash collection, security services, telephone, internet, cable, satellite, et cetera, and liability insurance. And for all of those services, the Cultural Affairs Department is poised to provide an annual stipend of $14,000 to support program and operational costs, again, with our goal of trying to maximize the chances for success for these facilities. So, that is our report, and our understanding is that this committee will discuss it and make its own recommendations to the full city council on September the 28th. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
That's it right now. Mr. Wesson, any questions? Yes.
Councilman Labaj, just for the record, I would, in keeping with the request to bifurcate the seven facilities that are owned and operated by Department of Recreation and Parks, the written recommendations by DCA, Sections 1E, G, 2, 3, and 4, be modified where they reference the Department of Recreation and Parks facilities.
Right, okay. And then also, for these, on page 5 of 6, on this report, if we could go through...
Councilmember, if you'd like, and for the public's information.
Right.
I could go through the ones that are individually at park properties versus those that are not...
One through four is park properties?
So, one is a park property, and if I may make a technical correction, that is really the Herman Park Art Center and the Royal Seco, not Art in the Park Art Center.
Okay.
Number two, the Barnesell Art Center is on park property. Number three, the Barnesell Junior Art Center is on park property. Number four, the Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery at Barnesell Park is on park property. Number five, the Eagle Rock Community Cultural Center is not on park property. Number six, the Encino Folk Art Center is on park property. Number seven, the Lancashire Art Center is not on park property. The Licken Heights Junior Art Center is a park property. Number nine, the Margorri Art Center is a park property. Number 10, the William Grant Stills Art Center is not on park property. Number 11, the William Ray Los Angeles Photography Center is on park property. Number 12, the Barnesell Gallery Theater is on park property. Numbers 13, Bedrit Theater, 14, the Warner Grand Theater, and 15, Division Theater are not on park property. So, if you take the facilities on Barnesell Park, you're talking about six facilities that are... Collectively, there are six facilities in this RFP that are going out to bid, or if you want to take them individually, it could be as many as nine.
But we are recommending that Barnesell be treated as one arts campus, so in that sense, whatever goes forward in Barnesell would be for all, you know, because we want one bidder for all of Barnesell.
Very well.
Well, to be clear, on this exhibit that's attached to their recommendation, they have just identified nine facilities.
Correct. Well, that's what...
But we're saying four of them are on Barnesell.
I understand, but you specifically identified nine.
Yeah, yeah.
So, to be clear, we're bifurcating these nine specific ones.
Correct. Absolutely. Yes.
The six are going forward, not seven.
Correct.
Let me ask a question, if I may. How come, or is there a legal way to just proceed contingent upon the action of the Wreckin' Parks Commission, whereas you just roll the program?
Right.
And they're gonna meet in a couple of weeks, and if for whatever reason they are uncomfortable with it and don't recommend that Wreckin' Parks do that, then we would eliminate that. But if we somehow add language that it's contingent upon their action, at least we can begin the process on everything. I just thought about it.
I thought about it, but except it's like you get in the plane and you get out to the runway, and then you gotta go back to the gate, because the commission is independent by its charter and status, and I would rather caution on the...
And whatever you want to do, I will do, but I just have a feeling if we ran, rolled the dice on this, we might be okay.
Well, I got that, but then the other problem too...
I said something, shaking your head. Uh...
We've got a lot of concerns by the Department of Recreation and Parks staff, and this needs to be vetted thoroughly by their board.
Right. Okay. Good. Okay. Very good. So, how many go forward, Ms. Garay?
Okay. So, that's, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six. Very good.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for those right there. Okay. This is a report. I want to do something. So, let's vacate those seats.
Okay.
And let's have a public comment. I see some puzzling faces. I'm gonna call on Paul Gamberg first.
If I could just reserve the time on 10-0773 and kind of try to get a point of order out here, which is that there is no public notice for this potential motion to bifurcate, and I think the city attorney is incorrect, and I think Carmen Trutanich needs to review this, and I think it's caused by... In the case of Barnesell, there's a grant deed that provides that it must be kept for art purposes. In the '60s, the city was wise enough to establish municipal arts, which took it on. Municipal arts has it. If municipal arts, or now the DCA, chooses to sublease it, it's still under DCA. Vicki Israel and I had this conversation, and I submitted a document to the public record on last month when she made, when the comments were made by the executive officer. The problem and a point of order here is there's no public notice that this bifurcation is going on. I think it's a grievous error. I think it needs to be reversed. I do not believe this belongs in Wreckin' Parks. By the grant deed and by the obligations of the grant deed, this is an arts park forever. It belongs under the Arts Department. If there is a sublicense or agreement, it has to be re-reviewed by city attorney and by you guys. There's a problem here if you bifurcate, especially without public notice.
Thank you very much. Okay, now...
I have a comment on 10-73 on the real issue, but I want to...
No, I just called you on that one. I'll call you after I call everybody else.
No problem.
Called you first. Madam City Attorney, in my role as a council member, there's times you could bifurcate things in committee. This is a process. The gentleman from Barnesell stated that he felt that this is unconscionable that we do this because of no public notice. But this is a simple thing where seven people are ready to get on the plane and six still have to... Can't. So, here's the thing, I'm talking.
Yes, it's...
Madam City Attorney.
Yes, I think you have the authority to bifurcate the issue.
Procedure, I have authority.
This, it comes within the scope of the item that is agendized.
Right.
And so, you definitely have the authority to take that action.
Great. Okay. All right. So, here we go. Public comment right here. Ms. Gallegos, is that right?
I'm...
Sorry. And Victoria, call? Come on in, sit down and start talking, because we're gonna run out of time. Maria Leon, Nathan Singer. Okay.
Okay, thank you for having me. First, I want to say that we want to keep the remaining DCA facilities operating. I represent various people who are part of various, like Bicycle Kitchen, Bike Oven, people who are part of arts in Northeast LA and downtown. And we want, short-term, find money from other accounts per percent for arts to fund community arts. Second, we want long-term, bond measure to fund programming and staffing at the existing facilities and new Prop K youth centers. Community arts, number three. Sorry, community arts is the soul of DCA. If the community arts is gone, DCA has only 27 staff, and 10 of these are highly-paid administrators. 10 people would equal 800,000 people of this budget. Consider moving community arts, grants, and public arts to other departments and eliminating highly-paid administrators. This is very short notice, but we will mobilize a lot of various people to basically go and publicize this 24/7.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Tom.
Hi, Victoria.
We have been collecting a lot of signatures, hundreds. These are just a few. These are copies. These are for you. I was surprised when I was doing it of how many people actually knew what was going on. Do you know how many people knew what was actually going on? Zero. And these are just, this is the public. Nobody knows that their art centers are being taken away from them. So, I don't know. I agree with, we need to tell people about it if we're gonna do it, because it's theirs, and these are for you. And Tom, you've done so many fabulous things, and I just, I know you can do this one. I know it.
Victoria, you're so sweet.
I'm serious. I mean, look what we've done. We did secession. I mean, I, you know, I did the neighborhood council thing. Nothing I did on the neighborhood council was anywhere near as important as this is. And, and look, you with the firemen fighting that fire that was ready to tear up all the people's houses. I mean, if you could do that, you can do anything.
Okay.
And you saved the Hollywood sign. I mean, I know you can do this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I agree with...
Introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Maria Leon, and I agree with her. I want to keep my art park. I want to keep my classes. I can't afford, you know, some fancy art school. There's just no way. And I'm willing to do whatever you think we should do to do that.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, have a good day. I like your braids. Okay.
Hi, I'm Nathan Singer. I represent the Barnesell Art Center Student Advisory Committee. We have a park that is a gem in Los Angeles. It has changed people's lives. It has made differences in children, and the teachers that teach there are world-class artists, and some of the people who go there to spend their time are also very, very highly-regarded artists in the community. It's a very important park. It serves a very important purpose. And I would say to you that if there's any way to keep it going, let's do it. We're going to have, I will be responsible for mounting a show of all our student work, and I would invite all of the council people and their aides to come and see the show, and you'll maybe get some idea of what's gonna be, what goes on there. Our registration is October the 9th, I think, and 6th, and I would encourage you just to take a three-hour course. Come and learn to draw. to draw. Come and learn to paint. It'll change your life.
Thank you very much. Lisa Siegel, Jerome Woods, Carol Presser, and Mark Boyard. Forgive me if I apologize. Okay.
Hi, hi, Tom. My name's Lisa Spiegel. I went to John Marshall High School with Tom Lebonier.
Thank you.
I just want to support what he said earlier, taking a look at where we can find the funds that are already here. And according to the LA Times, a couple of weeks ago, they showed salaries, and there were salaries individuals were getting, like 180,000. That's like, to me, I could see that money going to better use, or, you know, in a more realistic, considering the Times. Also, I just want, personally, what I would like to say is that for my family, generations of my family have been impacted by this park. My sisters and my mother and myself, they've all gotten, listen, they've gotten jobs as graphic artists, as film editors. So this isn't a leisure, this isn't for leisure. This impacts people's life completely on levels that you cannot imagine. And my sister illustrates, children's books, my National Geographic, I mean, these are important artists. The people who teach here are artists, and Maria Leon here, she's an excellent artist.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you been by the school lately?
Yes.
Good, very good. Okay, good. Mark?
No.
Where's Mark? Yeah, there's a chair. Where's the chair? Lisa, let's get a chair for these people. What are you doing, Lisa? You're on your internet thing there, Lisa? Come on. I apologize. Thank you. Okay.
Sure. Thank you, sir, for this opportunity to briefly address you. My name is Mark Boyard. I've been a professional singer for 30 years. I brought some of Dr. Still's recorded music, some books, sheet music of his that was given to me by his wife, Verna Arvey. I'm here to speak on behalf of keeping the William Grant Still Center open. Dr. Still, as I'm sure many of you know, but most of you don't know, was one of the men who became known as the dean of African-American composers. He worked with everyone from U.B. Blake to Leopold Stokowski. You can turn on KUSC, and not a week goes by when you don't hear his recorded music. Others of my colleagues here can speak better to the reasons why to keep the center open for the services that it provides to the children. I'm just hoping to keep the center open so that we don't lose, Dr. Still's name isn't expunged from the musical consciousness of this city. Dr. Still died a bitter and disappointed man, bitter because his music was subjected to the same exclusionary practices that his personal freedoms were, disappointed because he felt as though his music was not accorded the same respect as his white colleagues, many of whom revered him. To close the center would further expunge his memory from the local arts and community consciousness and be a grave disservice to him and act as a final nail in his coffin. Please don't relegate him any further to obscurity. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Woods?
Hi, I'm Jerome Woods. I'm here as a stakeholder. I'm a retired LA Unified School District teacher. I'd like to talk about PEG, Participation Experience and Growth. Participation by the community and myself, William Grant Still Arts Center, and Department of Cultural Affairs. This partnership includes collaboration, lifelong learning, historical and hallmark moments, like with John Outbridge, Wescale, Judith Steele, Barnett Honeywood, Buddy Colette, and Winston Marcellus, to mention others. Moreover, my family, friends, neighbors, and visitors from around the world, whom have benefited from William Grant Still Arts Center from an emotional, artistic, and cultural perspective. This partnership with PEG has fostered programs and exhibitions from youth workshops and summer camps, doll-making, musical treats, prison inmate workshops, celebrity galas, Gospel Extravaganza, literary and symphonic presentations. DCA is one of the few entities in the Los Angeles area that nourishes and provides culture and community for all LA residents, from grassroots to global. It is critical DCA remain open and operating to sustain community, culture, and life for majority of the LA residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Presser?
Okay, my name is Carol...
Before you start, you mentioned the name of Buddy Colette. Buddy Colette went to heaven yesterday, so we all should remember Buddy Colette in our prayers.
My name is Carol Presser, and I've been associated with the William Grant Still Arts Center for eight years as a parent and a community member. My own children were heavily involved in the arts when they were younger and took instruction in city-funded programs in music and art, because my family would have been priced out of private instruction. Both my older children went on to graduate from UCLA. My older daughter earned a PhD from Harvard and is presently a second-year student at Harvard Medical School, has done cancer and AIDS research at Eli Broad Institute of Genetics at MIT, and co-founded a company that works to bring electricity to rural Africa. My son is a fourth-year medical student at the University of California at San Francisco, has taught in a charter high school in south-central Los Angeles, and presently teaches science through community college program at San Quentin State Prison. He's a serious pianist and competed in an amateur piano competition in Paris last April. I believe the training in the arts that they got through the city-run programs greatly contributed to their development into the people they are today, and I would request that you keep William Grant Still open for other children who are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Johnson, Fred Allen, Irene Mendoza, Claire Nolan. Sorry, Claire, you go first. It's your close in front.
No problem.
Okay.
My name is Claire Nolton. I'm the Executive Director of McGrory Art Center. We are one of the currently partnered centers. We've been a private partnered, private-public partnership since 1995. I'd like to ask a question about the recommendations from DCA, specifically 1G about the maintenance issues. All repairs up to $5,000 will be the responsibility of the contractor. Is that meant to be per incident or per year?
Hold the time. That's a good question.
Yeah.
The, could you speak to the microphone? Irene, if you could show your microphone.
Hi, that is, that was meant to be on an annual basis. However, I did stipulate, and there is a footnote there, that it, that recommendation needs to be talked through with both GSD and Recs and Parks before we can solidify that recommendation. We wanted to put it there as a placeholder and are trying to come up with a figure that is not onerous or too onerous, but we felt that it was a little bit out of our jurisdiction in terms of, because that's not something that our department...
She made an absolutely tremendous point that's very key, because we could either make this work or make it not work, and that hurdle may be too giant. So we want to highlight that particular issue very big as we deliberate this, because it is city buildings, it is city property, and the city is saying to partner with us. And if we invite you into, quote, "our city home," we should make sure that home is maintained and not put it on the burden of who we invited our home, or more than what is easy to handle. Very good point. Run the clock.
My, the next issue I identified was that some of the partnered nonprofits would have city staff present. That's something that, as an executive director, I would find quite difficult in having employees that essentially have a boss that is not me, and having employees who are on two different pay scales, someone who's on a city pay scale and someone who's on the nonprofit pay scale, and someone who essentially I cannot fire or reprimand or replace. I think this, that structure would set up the partner for some pretty significant failures. So I would recommend against having two separate employment structures within the same organization. The other thing I'd like to say is, I did submit a letter on September 1st with some recommendations for how to make these public-private partnerships successful. We have been successful over the last 15 years, but it wasn't easy. And now our programs serve at least twice as many people as we did under the city, and we do it for very, very low cost. And it is not at all onerous for our neighborhood. Our costs are in line with the city-run facilities in terms of pricing for classes. But the partnered centers would definitely need seed money to get started, and they would definitely need training in nonprofit management, so that all the people that are here that are representing their centers saying, "Don't close my center," get the leadership training so that they keep it open. They take ownership for it. They run it the way their community wants it to be run.
Very good. Thank you so much.
You're here.
Fred?
I'm Fred Allen. I'm the Vice President of the Board of the Grand Vision Foundation, and I'm here talking about the Warner Grand Theater, which we're hoping to win the RFP for. I want to thank the DCA for a very well-thought-out proposal. I do have a couple of issues, first being that the requirement that we accept the building as is, and then are required to maintain the building. It seems like there ought to be some element of bringing the building up to a certain standard before you pass it off to a contractor. The second being that the rent is scaled, but the stipend to support the organization is flatted across all of the organizations, and it's going to take a lot more money to operate a Warner Grand Theater than it's going to take to operate a Barnstall Theater, something like that. It seems like...
For the size, I got it.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Mendoza?
Hello, I'm Irene Mendoza. I'm a board member of the Grand Vision Foundation. The Grand Vision Foundation was founded when the city acquired the Warner Grand Theater. The purpose of the city acquiring the Warner Grand Theater was for revitalization of our downtown historic business district in San Pedro. And I'm here in support of the RFP, and I really hope that the city, the departments, will be able to stay on this timeline. We do not and cannot afford to have the Warner Grand dark for any period of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson?
Yes. Well, I really liked the person who said, "We know you're going to figure it out. You saved the Hollywood sign." So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, there's a lot of moving parts here, just in the Warner Grand alone, which is about to celebrate its 80th birthday. You know, this is a building that has a lot of concerns. We would like to explore some of those concerns with General Services and see if before we, we are very supportive of this, the general intent here, and we really are happy with how Cultural Affairs is moving forward, and we're very grateful. But we do think that we need to have some more contact with General Services so we can really understand the condition of our building, and maybe some of the others may want to know the condition of theirs so that we know what we're getting into.
Well, I had to do, on that particular thing, when we deliberate for everybody now, I was going to wait toward the end, I'm not going to invite you into our home and say, "Here's the keys to the house," unless it's a home that could be occupied. I'm not going to stick it all on your back, or we're bound for failure in three and five and seven years, unless there is some process. And that's what the partnership's about. We're part of the partnership. We're not going to throw it all on you to say you have to do it. So we'll have to figure that out, so...
You know, for us, we've spent untold amount of money helping to fix up the theater, but mostly in aesthetic and comfort for the public, and so they can enjoy the low-cost concerts and so forth. But now our efforts need to be to raise money for operations. So if we're raising money for operations, we can't fix up the building anymore.
I got it. Does anybody here use LA Shares?
We do.
You know LA Shares? LA Shares is a great organization. They had bad air conditioning. The council office paid for it based on the money we received from the advertising at bus shelters. There's little funds that we have to help. It should be a cool, it is a cool place. It should be physically cool as well, especially in the heat. So those are things that we should do, big things, because I don't think you could do an air-conditioned unit.
Although currently, it's not functioning.
Right, all right.
But you know what? We do need to think more entrepreneurially with some of these facilities.
Got it. We're going to call a few more folks right now. Thank you very much. We have it right here. I want to say Aviva Weiner, is that correct? Paul Gamberg, I'm going to hold you to the end. Nyla Ocelian, from the William Grant Center, Ares Pierce, if I have that correct, forgive me. And Jamie Watkins, there's four right there. You can start.
Mr. Chairman, I was at the LA Shares facility in your district last week.
Good, good, thank you. Hello, here we go.
Good morning. My name's Aviva Weiner. I have been part of Barnstall Arts Center and the Junior Arts Center since the '50s. My children took classes there. I took classes there. I taught there. I've seen a lot of great artists go through there. I really like the people we're saying, good jobs are brought about in the future by taking care of our children, and that's true for all of these programs, not just for Barnstall. The whole city needs to accept its responsibility of raising the children of the city. If you, as a family, if you were the parent and you were running out of money, you wouldn't just stop feeding your children. You'd maybe put them on peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, but you don't just cut out the food. So if you close all of these programs for the city, then it's like saying to your children, "Sorry, you don't eat anymore." There needs to be some kind of a compromise where you can work funding the programs and being sure that they're continued. I personally would rather we don't be privatized. I like the city government. I think it works okay. But however it gets done, you need to make sure that all the art programs continue.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Ares Pierce, and I'm here to support the city's retention of the center. We come with this stack, new stack, of letters of support and petitions. These are new from a couple of months ago, and they've just been collected in the last couple of weeks.
And she's talking about William Grant Still.
Yes. You're familiar with the history of the center. No point in my going into that. Let me tell you why I'm, oh, they already have cops.
Yes.
Yes.
She was just trying to be efficient from her last reprimand.
The reason I got up this morning was because of the experience of little Alex Munoz Mayo. He played Captain Hook in the center's end-of-summer program. He was so fantastic, I was enchanted every time he came on stage. I was not the only person who thought so. The Children's Shakespeare Company in Santa Monica called the center the following week and offered him a scholarship.
Wow.
Now, our Wendy, whose parents has a ballet company, she will be exposed to ballet. Her father's a musician. She'll have art, you know, music classes. Our Peter Pan's father is a doctor. His mother is an educator. They will be exposed. But little Alex Munoz, who lives down the street, you know, not even middle-class, hard-working but loving parents, what opportunity is he going to have if these centers are closed? You know, the opportunities that come with art, the joys and insights provided to the arts can be summed up in little Indian chief. He put on his costume for the first time. He looked in the mirror. He was dumbstruck. He was silent. And then he said, "I have found myself." You know? We need sports. We need recreation. We need relaxation. We need parks. Yes, matter of fact, Councilman Wesson recently supervised the ribbon-cutting of the skateboard area. We need the after-school programs for the basics. William Grant Still's was a musician. He lived in the artistic world. If people don't learn to appreciate the turns of phrase in the telling of a good tale, if children don't learn to hear great music, to see the artistic nuances, their adult hoods will be devoid of the appreciation of the arts that human development has fostered. They will all be for for it. Los Angeles thinks it's a city. Well, a city is known by the covenant it keeps with its citizens. And we're here as citizens who cannot sit idly by and quietly watch our center or the other centers disappear. We must save William Grant Still Center for the nourishment and delight of the souls of all ages. It's my fervent, fervent hope that each member of this committee, and particularly Council Wesserman, will determine along with us that city-funded endeavors in the form of community art centers will disappear, not on our watch. As a matter of fact, it's because of Nate Holden, former Councilman, that we're still there. We believe, Council Wesserman, Councilman Wesserman, that you are...
Wesson.
Wesson, sorry. I'm so nervous.
I know, so just relax.
Okay.
Just wrap it right up so we keep everybody...
You're in favor of keeping the center under the umbrella of the Cultural Affairs Department. We urge you to light a fire under your staff to work for this purpose. Your Chief of Staff has yet to return my phone call regarding a meeting that you instructed him to set up with us. We urge you to encourage Ms. Garai to find the means. We urge you that the funds designated for this purpose find their state purpose.
And you could present that letter to Mr. Wesson.
We urge you to commit your resources so the people of your district will not lose this beloved place, and your legacy as a protector of the arts in the community will have a face and a place. Thank you very much. Amen.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, hold on a second.
Okay, let's be straight. The first thing, when they were going to close the center, I came in, came up with the money to make sure that we kept it going until we went through this process. I am totally committed to keeping the William Grant Still Arts Center afloat. I have three children from members of my staff that participate and all, so if I did not do it, they would beat me up. So I am committed to do whatever we can. Would I love to keep it under the city's umbrella? That would be my first choice. But what we're trying to do now is just come up with options to make sure that our children can get the activities that they need. So I will go on record without a doubt in saying that I will do everything that I can to ensure that we keep that center open. And I'm going to have a discussion with my Chief of Staff to find out what in fact happened with the meeting. I probably should have had you go through my assistant, Sean, because he only does like eight million things every, every day. But anyway, thank you for coming, and it's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm against the privatization, because as a contractor... I'm against the privatization because, as a contractor, you're not talking apples and apples. You're talking about giving away almost fifty years of history because of budget cuts.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Janine Watkins. I was instrumental in advocating for the Watts Towers not to be privatized. You're giving it away, and I think that it needs to be vetted with Parks and Recs, it needs to be vetted within the private communities. DCA does not have the capacity to do it alone, and they are doing it alone. Art is a very elitist business, and the community cannot afford for it to become elitist by it being given over without community voice. And so, if this is done to privatize, and if there's big organizations like Mocha or Lacma that decide to come through, the community may not have a voice anymore. If you choose to privatize, then put the community at the table and allow them to bring their wealth of experience to help dictate how this is best done, so the community always has a voice. In Watts, we are still scared of privatization because the document that they are crafting with Lacma is being done in isolation. So, we can still be privatized because we have no voice in how this document is being drafted. So, we are asking this committee for future, because it's a national historic landmark, for DCA to step to the table and pull all of the city entities that are affecting that campus to sit down and to craft that wisely, so that the community is not, again, compromised because it's being done in isolation. So, what was privatization is now -- I mean, what was supposed to be preservation is now looking to be expanded into privatization on paper, and the details are in the documents, and the details will control my community. So, I advocate for future to be able to sit with this committee for us to properly look and vet this.
All right, just for the record, Madam City Attorney, thank you for those very fine comments. When we describe this, how do we describe this? As a private-public partnership or a public-private partnership?
Well, I believe the original motion referred to it as a public-private.
So, I wanted to make that point real clear, that this is a public-private partnership, where we enhance the relationship. It's not private first. I'll give you a voice.
Give us voice. No, at the table, give us voice to look at the document, so we're not compromised.
Very good. I'll work with you on that. Thank you very much, Ms. Ocelian. Thank you.
Good morning. I come to you this morning, I'm Nyla Ocelian. I'm sort of a three-headed monster this morning. I come to you as--
One beautiful head.
Thank you so much. I come to you as President of the Hollywood Arts Council, Vice President of Advocacy for the Barnsdall Art Park Foundation, and Chair of the Culture and Events Committee of the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council. First, your remarks regarding inviting about the maintenance and delivering these facilities in a condition that people would want to take them over are much appreciated. From the Hollywood Arts Council's point of view, we've, for thirty years, we've watched as programming at Barnsdall has been cut year after year, and we look forward to an opportunity of the public-private partnership and the guidelines that you've mentioned regarding the facilities to really generate some very responsible partners who have an eye on the community and do bring the community forward for better art programs at our park. With regard to the security issues at Barnsdall, I think something has to be looked at very closely, that four partners to have to be responsible for security where we have a national monument on the grounds, I think that that has to be looked at very carefully as we go forward. From the Neighborhood Council's point of view, we just want to make sure that this whole entire process is transparent and has maximum community input as we go forward, particularly as the responses come out to the RFP, who are involved, how are they really going to serve the community and bring and expand the arts?
Thank you very much. I will want to ask the City Attorney, Mr. Wesson, I don't know if I could have a committee meeting because of schedules, but I would like to have a community meeting with possibly Mr. Garcetti up at Barnsdall with all those facilities, if you're free, Mr. Wesson, but I'd like to be able to afford that. There is, the amazing thing about the process here is this room is filled. So, as much as one says, "No one knows about this," all of you have heard about this. So, not everybody knows, but those -- this is important that we're all here. I would like to reach out specifically to the Barnsdall community and my familiarity with it, as well as Mr. Garcetti, to try to focus on that, because you make some very good points. How do you have four contractors deal with, there's some joint-use issues internally that could be, four partners, that could be resolved very quickly, so--
One item that I did forget to mention is that on October the 5th, the Barnsdall Art Park Foundation, in cooperation with the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council, Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council, and the Hollywood Arts Council are looking to have an information meeting so that the points of what we've been discussing today as it goes forward to City Council, so that we can bring that out--
Very good, okay.
--to the community, and we hope that you can participate. Thank you.
All right. So, Lily Bernard, please, Tyler Reeve, Lilian Asumi, and Erin Donovan. If you wanted to start, since you're set.
Pardon me?
Want to start right there?
Okay. My name is Lilian Asumi, and I'm a community member of the Barnsdall community, and I have been taking classes there, my family, my children, my grandchildren, for over thirty-five years. I'm very concerned about the public-private nature of this RFP. I am very concerned about maintaining the community and the community interests, and I think that the DCA has done a job of providing, a good job of providing for the community, and I'm very concerned about, you know, the politics of operating a public-private venture, the transition period, and also the interests of any private or nonprofit organization. They have their own interests, and I'm not sure that it's in sync with the community.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Erin Donovan. I'm a teacher at Barnsdall Art Center. I am a leader of the Barnsdall Art Center Student Advisory Committee, one of the leaders. I represent hundreds of students and teachers and thousands of citizens around Barnsdall who use that park and enjoy its public access. We offer very low-income, very low -- we offer classes very cheap, and it is a godsend to the city. I have one student who is no longer a student of mine, but he was a quadriplegic from Korea. He came in in a wheelchair and barely able to hold a pencil. After the years of teaching him, he became my star student, the most talented painter I've seen, and he was walking. Doctors told him he couldn't do it. The arts helped him. I have another student who, his family has escaped West Africa, the violence in West Africa. He is a young kid, and he is a -- I have bought, out of my own pocket, supplies for him so he can enjoy it. He doesn't want to burden his family with the cost of buying a sketchbook and a pencil. If we give up on the disabled, the poor, the minorities, society pays a giant, giant price that's irreversible. A million dollars, a little million dollars plus to keep these art centers open is nothing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good morning. My name is Lily, Lily Bernard. I'm a Cuban immigrant of African, Chinese, Spanish, and British ancestry. I have six young children. I'm the wife of Franklin Ferguson, who's a civil rights attorney for fifteen years. I also have been blessed with an art studio on Chungking Road, which is the main strip of the Chinatown Art District, which is a world-famous art district. I am the only non-Caucasian person who has an exhibition space there. I run the Abla Underground Gallery in the basement of my studio, which is dedicated to representing underrepresented artists. I'm here on behalf of the William Grant Still Art Center, asking that you please allow it to maintain the integrity in terms of its mode of operations as it has been functioning in the last several decades. And the reason being is that it fills a very important experiential void in the mainstream art district. I've learned a lot having an art district in a mainstream art gallery area, which is that the majority of the art that we see in the museums and in the art galleries are really of young, white Caucasian men. And the reason it functions is because -- and I really encourage you to please not privatize places like Barnsdall, too, particularly Mocha, because Mocha and other museums and these galleries are really feeding grounds. I tell you this from experience, from speaking with gallery owners, that they are feeding grounds for the professors at UCLA and USC, who are all Caucasian, and who bring in only Caucasian students. I applied twice for the MFA programs there, in UCLA and USC, was rejected. I have a 3.2-something average from Cornell University. I'm still applying. When I went to the MFA Open House at USC, there were sixteen MFA students. Every single one of them was white, and every single one of them was under the age of twenty-five, with the exception of a thirty-two-year-old woman. This is a problem. Now, I'm saying that, I know that Olga understands this, because in the 2008 Latino Heritage calendar, she says, "Living in Los Angeles gives us the opportunities to celebrate a rich mosaic of cultures and to encourage people to experience the extraordinary range of the city's Latino artistry and achievement." It's one thing to see art in a catalog in our calendar. It's another thing to see art in real life, up front, in a museum, in a gallery. Here we are in Los Angeles, and we don't have that experience. And the William Grant Still Art Center, I have been exhibited there twice, is so instrumental because it brings artists of color and of age to centers, and they put on kick butt shows. I mean, their shows will, their shows will outdo any of the shows that you see at Mocha because the floors are clean, the walls are white, celebrities come and attend, children come and attend, and they celebrate artists, whereas Mocha, all the galleries, what do they do? They bring Caucasian artists in from Europe, from Romania, from China. Now, China's great, but when do you see Latino, Asian, Native, Black artists celebrated in the museums and in the art galleries here in Los Angeles? You do not. And Olga says that--
We're going to ask you to wrap it up, because it gave you a little extra time, because you're extremely good in your points, so--
So, what I want to say is that please allow the William Grant Still Center and the Barnsdall to not operate privatized with Mocha, because they need to continue to celebrate this diversity, which Olga says is important. And I know that Olga, being a Caucasian, a Caucasian Cuban -- yes, but you are Caucasian, Olga. You are Cuban-Caucasian. I am an African. I'm an African.
Here we go.
Honey.
Here we go. Yeah, hey, hey, hey.
I love you.
Thank you very much.
Let me tell you something, Olga understands, because I said--
Ma'am, ma'am. Ms. Bernard, thank you. Give Ms. Bernard a hand there for that. Thank you. Okay. I, we're going to have to wrap the meeting up. I want everybody to have an opportunity to speak on that issue here. But let me tell you something right now, Mr. Wesson, I believe in. There is a, there is some reality, which is just spoken by that speaker, but also I hope, too, that reality comes together in the sense of crossroads. Crossroads is what brings people together. I'm not afraid of putting everybody in a room, but it's important that everybody be in that room and let them know they can come into that room. So, with that being said, I got to call the next speakers. Tyler Reeve.
Excellent art.
Tyler Reeve.
Especially the cat. I love that. That I love.
Aiden Kilbrow, Lynn Jenkins, Julian Salazar. Here we go. Yes.
Hi, my name's Tyler Reeve. I moved to Los Feliz, across the street from Barnsdall Art Park, last year. I'm a single dad. The reason why I did, I moved where I did is because of that park, and I'd just like to say, I think, what everybody is saying, which is, there's tremendous community support for all of these organizations, and everybody understands that times are tough. It's clear everywhere. But I think it's incumbent upon city leaders to make sure that the programs function as they are right now, that things aren't taken away anymore. You know, throughout history, invading nations would always destroy the libraries and the cultural institutions first, and it seems like now, in this country, this happens in the name of capitalism and privatization, and it needs to stop. So, I would just like to ask everybody to keep the problems, to keep the programs as they are, so I can take my little girl up to the park, and she can do what I moved to Los Feliz to have her do.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Julia Salazar. I'm Executive Director of Center for the Arts Eagle Rock, or one of the facilities on the list. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm going to speak on just one point, and that is the term of the agreement, term of the lease. I've been Executive Director three and a half years, and three years ago, we did a very expensive architectural study. We're in a historical library, and it's very beautiful, but it's falling apart. And if we get a five-year lease with another five-year to renew, it's not going to be enough for our funders to provide a capital campaign and remodel the facility as we've been planning to for three years. So, we've been a little bit stuck. The facility is starting to have some major disrepair, and we want to restore it to its beauty. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Aiden Kimbrow.
Alden Kimbrow is my name, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the William Grant Still Community Arts Center. I've been collecting African-American art in historical archives for many years, and I've been fortunate enough to present a number of historical exhibits at William Grant Still Community Arts Center, starting in the 1980s. Exhibitions such as The Legacy of Malcolm X, Children Under Apartheid, Bebop and Beyond: The History of Black Music, Celebrating Black Los Angeles, which is a black photographic exhibit, The Political Graphics of the Black Panther Party, and last year, Charles Mingus: Passions of a Man, which was presented in conjunction with youth musical education programs throughout the city, including William Grant Still Art Center. This year, we just presented an exhibit entitled The High Priest of Bop: The Musical Career of Thelonious Monk, which also had a youth musical education component at the William Grant Still Art Center. And we're currently preparing exhibit on the 50th anniversary of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, and we hope to do that in several weeks. My most recent exhibits have been in Manchester, England, and in the New Museum in New York City, and we're now in negotiation to do an upcoming show in Antwerp, Belgium. But had it not been for the opportunity to create these early exhibits at William Grant Still, I probably would not have the chance to expand them to an international arena. So, as a taxpayer, and like all taxpayers in the West Adams community, we need William Grant Still Community Arts Center to continue to exist. I know that you are supportive of this wonderful cultural center, but I would like to see you take a strong stand to keep this center open and keep it from being privatized. Finally, and to close, I would like to say a word about the passing of Mr. Buddy Collette, a great jazz artist and a great friend of William Grant Still Art Center. One of the last, over the last several years, he appeared before us and spoke, interacted with our young people at both the Charles Mingus Show and also the Thelonious Monk Show. And I'd just like to read a brief note that he sent me several weeks ago on August 29th. He said, "Dear Alden, thanks for the tape and the note. I enjoyed it, and I hope you do more. You did a great job on the project. Sincerely, Buddy Collette." And I hope we all remember him.
I'll remember him. Thank you very much. Alden, have you ever heard of Ted Kimbrow?
Yes.
That name, with any relation?
No relation, but a good friend of mine.
A great L.A. Unified, cared about people, all children.
He's a good man.
In heaven.
Yes, I know that.
All right, Ms. Jenkins.
My name is Lynn Jenkins. I'm a grant writer, that's my profession. I'm a longtime student at Barnsdall Art Center. I'm a professional artist as well. I've often enjoyed your calendar photography, Mr. Laban, so I know that your heart is in the right place. And I also have friends who started out as children at William Grant Still. I want to echo, I want to talk about dollars first, okay? There are some things we're missing here that the city of L.A. could be capitalizing on, specifically to Barnsdall Art Center, but our community arts in general. What are the reasons that international tourists would come to the city of L.A. to see art? It would be so that they could actually interact with the local artists and have that experience. That is something that the community art centers have never really been leveraged to capitalize on. I cannot fathom it. It's something unique that we have, that we should really be developing, because in this age of internet, people can just look on the line and see the photograph. It's the opportunity to really rub shoulders with the people that create it. So, another question I would ask is, this gentleman has created this great music via William Grant Still. Why is it not being played at the municipal art gallery or the theater, right here in L.A. at Barnsdall Art Center? I personally, in my time in L.A., have not really seen artists of color represented at those theaters. It's like we're willing to throw away an asset that instead we should be capitalizing on. So, one of the things I feel is that those facilities at Barnsdall should be treated as a multidisciplinary art center. We could, again, because at one time, I understand, in the '60s, Barnsdall had an international presence in the world. So, now, I'm going to go to, let's say, worst-case scenario, we privatize, which I am completely against. That says to me that, therefore, there will be less staff needed in the Cultural Affairs Department. Let's say perhaps about thirteen people who are currently associated with the community arts programs. programs. That would leave the staff from 40 to about 27, 10 of whom are senior managers who all make $100,000 or more. Did I just hear a bell go off? I think I heard a bell go off in this room. Not sure, so I'm going to say that again. That would leave 10 senior managers making over $100,000 a year with 17 staffers, which would be a ratio of two staff people to one supervisor. Hmm, does it take that many people to run public arts and grants? I wonder. Don't think so.[1121.58][1121.58](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
I have one other point, and that is on Ms. Gray's letter, which was in the Agenda Packet, Item Number Three, which, in which she stated and took credit for the $10 million grants, dollars in grants she's brought in, which is terrific. What I would like to know is, of those grants, how many, how much, how many grants were pursued that actually funded community arts? I have a feeling none.[1145.23][1145.23](APPLAUSE). I have a feeling none. If you want to allow the department to fall apart, one way to do it is to not go after that dollars. The other thing she mentioned was her travel expenses, which included trips that some of the funders require. My experience has been, professionally, that any funder that gives you money includes your travel expenses in your grant award, so you get the money that way. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.[1171.33][1171.33](APPLAUSE). Cynthia Davis, Alexandra Garcia. You're going to be in a minute, Paul. Lisa Siegel, but you already spoke, is that correct, Lisa?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay. Paul Gamber. That's it, folks, those are the last four. Here we go.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Davis, and I'm an Assistant Professor in the Medical Sciences Institute at Charles Drew University of Medicine and Science. I've worked at the university for the last 26 years, developing HIV-related education and outreach, primarily in the south-central area, but we cover both the city and the county of LA, to try to reduce the high rates of HIV. You might be asking, well, what does HIV and AIDS have to do with arts programming? Well, because of the stigma that's associated with the disease, I've had to adapt my programs to be able to reach the community, because a lot of people will not come to a workshop if it says HIV and AIDS. So about nine years, no, 11 years ago, I created a program called Dolls of Hope, where we make handmade cloth dolls to give to AIDS orphans all over the world. And I've traveled internationally with the program, and have given out over 6,000 of these dolls all over the world. Well, at William Grant Stills, we put on multiple Dolls of Hope workshops, where young people, as well as their parents, can come in and make these dolls, and then I send them to Haiti, to Cuba, to South Africa, and what have you. And so I, I'm here to support William Grant Still's Art Center, to maintain the integrity of that institution in our community, because there are minimal HIV-related programs in that area of the city of LA to do the outreach and the education to that population. I have a mobile testing van, working with the staff from the clinic. Within the last two years, we've been able to bring our mobile testing van there for National HIV/AIDS Awareness Month and offer free testing. All the services that I bring to that clinic are free. I commute. I live out in Altaloma. I commute 120 miles every day for the last 26 years, coming into LA to provide these services to medically underserved communities. That's my passion, that's my work. My daughter went to Pilgrim School. Okay, I volunteered at Pilgrim School, K through 12, making sure that those students got access to this information so that they could be protected. The children from that part of the community also need to have people like me making ourselves available to educate them so that they don't become victims of HIV and AIDS. Thank you.
I got it.[1330.01][1330.01](APPLAUSE). You know the name of Dr. David Ho?
Yes.
Dr. David Ho went to Marshall High School, where Mr. Labange and Ms. Siegel went. I was behind him in math class, way behind him.
Yeah.
Way behind him. Thank you very much.
You're in art class.
That's right.
Good morning. My name is Alejandro Garcia, and I'm 16 years old. I am currently a senior at Community Harvest Charter School and plan to attend college the upcoming year. I have been working at the William Grant Still Art Center as an intern through the Archadizes, as a summer teacher and office assistant for three years. I first became aware of this job through my older sister, who also worked through here three consecutive summers. Our experiences at the William Grant Still Art Center have been really fulfilling and inspiring. As an employee here, I am able to work with, as well as mentor, younger children who come from similar backgrounds as mine. It has been a very pleasingly experience to work with children who have so much talent and potential to succeed. Thankfully, places such as the William Grant Still Art Center help children, specifically minorities, not only improve their skills, but also create strong bonds within each other. When we think of Los Angeles, we oftentimes think of gang violence and racial issues, not at the William Grant Still Art Center. All children here, no matter their age, race, and ethnical background, learn to work together to fight these issues that have long existed within our communities. The greatest thing about working here has been seeing how beneficial the center has been to these children. Truthfully, our community lacks resources that help our children and teenagers like me stay away from gang violence and racial issues. Our community should have the same opportunities as other wealthier communities. From my own personal experiences, I have witnessed how gangs can destroy a person's life, their families, and their community. It's time to prevent this and work towards a better future for younger generations.[1441.01][1441.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. Good night.[1444.01][1444.01](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Turn around, look at all those people that are cheering. Got to turn around, look at them. There we go.[1466.83][1466.83](APPLAUSE). Very good note. Mr. Weston.
You know, this young lady's a perfect example of what happens when you have functioning art programs and recreation programs, and so I think it was, I think you moved a lot of people, myself included. But I did want to say, I just got a text from a staff member that's kind of upset with me that I didn't mention, Billy Green had a doll exhibit that was at William Grant Still from '09, December '09 to March 10. So Billy, if you're listening, I said it.
Good job. Okay, you got it on there. Very good. Ms. Siegel.
Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions now, I'm coming, from a citizen coming to you. First of all, I was shocked to hear that, why are we at this point at such a late date? Okay, I'm wondering, a lot of city workers have to take furloughs, they take pay cuts. What's happening? Why, you know, is that going on in the DCA? Also, I want to know, Barnsdall, William Stills, these are, these are not just art centers, these, these are Los Angeles institutions. So that's why I am so shocked that this is even being questioned. Why are we piddling around with this? I really don't get it. And I'm just coming from like a citizen that's thinking logically, like, well, what about grant funding? I mean, we live in a city with very wealthy people and resources. Why haven't this funding for this been done like a year ago? Why are we like piddling around now at the last minute, trying to find something quickly? It makes, it makes me very discouraged about some of the city people.[1575.83][1575.83](APPLAUSE). But I have to think about what that lady said about how you said, "Save the Hollywood" sign. What I would love, love to see, because everywhere I went, I saw the "Save the Hollywood" sign, I saw you on TV, I heard you talking, I saw you in the newspapers, I want to see, "Save the art centers of Los Angeles."
Very good, very good.
We really want it![1597.71][1597.71](APPLAUSE).
Paul Gamber, your turn.
Let's get this media, come on.
Thank you.
We know you politicians, you guys love media. We know every, all the...
We love people who love you, Ms. Siegel. Hold on a second, I'm going to do what, I'm going to do what Mr. Hickman in class would say, quit talking. Mr. Hickman would say, quit talking in class, so thank you very much.
Just first, to say that I also recently was shocked to learn that our student support organization is deeply divided over the idea of public-private partnership. It is late in the game. I have a question and two points. My question is, is it possible to look to Olga as the public partner and at least postpone a bifurcation decision pending some investigation whether the arts partner should be arts endowed or arts qualified, culturally qualified to preserve history, architecture, and art? That's a question. Is it possible for her, for DCA to retain control of arts in the parks? They've had it this whole time. Why can't they give us the lease? Why can't it come from the Culture Department? Vicky Israel called me, this, please, this is just a question, it's just a question. I have two points, this is a question. Vicky Israel called me, we talked at home, and she said, "Look, if cultural affairs come off, then Reckon Parks goes on." And I said, "Sure, if cultural affairs comes off." Why is culture, the question is, why does cultural affairs have to come off? Is that some legal...
Thank you very much, Mr. Gamber. This committee meeting today has been very good. You're all very spirited individuals, and it's great to have everyone's voice be heard here. Next Tuesday, we have another committee meeting. I was trying to bifurcate, Mr. Weston, I'm thinking I want to continue it a week, because I want to look at some of these points to make it solid as we go forward. The only way we're going to enhance the lives of others in the future is if we do it individually, whatever our station in life is. And the call for government, whether it's the Cultural Affairs Department or any other department, is only going to do it with partners, only going to do it with partners. So this matter has been very good and spirited in public comment. The questions Ms. Schechter has written down, we'll have some answers, but we're going to continue this a week. I'm going to also talk to my colleagues. I would also like to ask you, fair to say, to each of you to visit your local council office and state your claim as well. I'll be visiting my colleagues. Mr. Weston and I strongly believe in you, as Mr. Reyes does as well, but it's a situation now where we do not have the funding that we once had, but many good points have been brought up, so we can look at that. Our council meeting meets in one minute, we can't be late to that. Mr. Weston, any closing comments?
No, other than, if you want to continue it up, I would be very supportive of it.
Okay, so we're going to continue this one week. Thank you all for coming down.